County Offices of Education and our contractor to kind of put these trainings into place. So that would happen this year. So it would really be, this year, we would be focusing on a connection between the field and the expectation of writing, what it looks like, what it is. But at the same time, be building back up the assessment. It's our intent to make them better. It's not our intent to have them go away. It's our intent to bring them back stronger than ever. So take this time to also look at how we could possibly, you know, I think we need to look at writing at grade four. We came to you with a NATE pre-port, and as you recall, NATE assesses writing at grade four with lots of constructed response, so shorter kinds of responses, not a full essay. I think we need to look at that. We need to, we'll be needing to do some field testing. And so, given that we'd have this year, then we'd bring it back in 2006, probably at four and seven. We tried to get it back at four and seven, so.
Board comment on this?
You know, the caveat, the caveat for me is the whole issue that, you know, we can't change the statute, because I certainly have some suggestions for streamlining and for, you know, reducing the number of tests, and we've had some just conversations about that in general. But in light of the fact that, you know, the statute is the statute, I mean, our hands are tied.
The worry that I have is in taking time to reformulate the writing, that with future budget pressures, it never gets back in. And the danger we'll do to the system in the first year will be fairly small, and over time, it will grow, because schools seeking a good API will drop writing and focus only on reading and in math. And you get what you test for. We put a lot of focus and pressure on the API, and it's essential that writing become a large part of the system and of the API. So on one part, I'm thrilled that it's going to, we're going to improve the writing assessment, and the other part, it scares me to death about the political realities of having the budget savings come out of writing, and then in a year or two, it's coming back in. And if so, when we go down this path, we're going to have to fight pretty hard to make sure that everyone understands why writing should be tested, why it's important to be in there, and that we actually, that something else gets cut in the future and not writing. And it's not cheap to test. It's just very important to test.
Well, one thing, a number of years ago, I think maybe Joe and Reed were still on the board at their, or on the board at that time, but Dick Atkinson from, who was the president of the University of California System, came up and was talking about the SATs and what was required to get into college and so forth. And his one statement was, "If we did nothing but take writing essays, we can predict better than any other way how well kids would do when they got into college." So I think this writing is really, really important, and I would hate to have it go by the wayside, as Reed said, could happen.
I think there's agreement with that sentiment here on the board, anyway. Lisa, I feel that way.
Yeah, I think, I think that's true, and I think that as bad as the state budget is, and not to make light of millions of dollars being important, in a $105 billion state budget, sacrifice, you know, progress and educating kids, like Reed said, when writing is so important, we shouldn't make this a budget decision. We should make it about what's really right for the future of education.
Right. So the question is to retool for a year, come back with an improved test, listening to the field, and then, but how, and suggestions, Ray, someone, how do we make, ensure that it is coming back and there's money in the budget for it? What is the method by which we would do that?
Well, and one of the things I want to, and I know I've mentioned this to Reed, it's important to understand how we got writing in the first place. And even though the board has always been supportive of writing, the way that it came into existence was really through the Assembly Speaker's Office at the time, and many people who were responsible for that decision are still there in education. And they wanted to have some sort of performance assessment. And the only one that really lends itself to quality assessment at this stage of our testing system is writing. And the agreement was made at very high levels to put it in once in elementary school and once in middle school. So really, the moving force behind this performance assessment, writing, was the legislature. And I think that if you have commitment from the governor, that education is extremely important, including writing, and I think that Bonnie has just given you that clue right here, that it's critically important, that you combine that with the legislature's desire to have it, that you have a good chance of keeping it. Having said that, and I think Deb and I have talked, as well as the testing liaisons, the idea is to keep the momentum in the system. That's where I'm more concerned, actually. It's the momentum in the system and the focus on the writing. And we had an idea of having some professional development surrounding this whole process, which is what you were saying, Bonnie, which is, you're doing it for the right reason, which is not just the money, it's to do some quality work. So if you want to talk about that, Deb, if you...
Sure. And this is kind of in the initial stages, but what we'd look at is developing some materials for districts that we'd provide, rubrics, sets of anchors, those are the papers that you would use to conduct your writing sessions. And then, as I said, what we envision is this trainer of trainer models, that we hopefully could get some assistance from our county offices of education whereby, that we would bring folks together to score these writing assessments. You know, I couldn't agree with you more that we need to do this right. And in terms of folks looking at it and having it in their API, right now, it's such a small part of API, folks, it's not, it doesn't weigh heavy in their consideration of API. So hopefully, by making the professional development available to folks, folks will have a clear understanding of what the expectation of writing is. It's very important so that when we give them these materials in the future, in other words, the scoring rubric, that it doesn't just sit, but that it actually gets used. And one of the best ways to do that is to make sure that we bring them together and we actually give them training to do that. So that's what we want to do. That's where we're focusing our efforts.
Couple things. One, we talked about liaison reports, and this is a great example of where the liaisons on this issue spent an enormous amount of time really hashing through this with Deb and making sure we really looked hard at all of the options. This issue is important enough, I've sadly become convinced, I mean, Reed and I could tee up a whole number of areas we would much prefer to cut out of the testing system. I would start in high school, that we don't have the authority. And so, we really are stuck on this. But I do think it is very important to have the conversation, and I know the superintendent will lead it, within the Ed Coalition, to make sure that that's well understood before we take this action. And so, we are urging no action, and Deb had said, not asking for a vote today, that we would prefer to do this on that call in two weeks, because we really do need to get people's input into this. And I also want to acknowledge Deb, poor Deb has had to be the messenger on some very bad news that was not ever creating this, was all in place before she came. And she's hit from Jack to Gavin to Reed to I to Ray, and we all said, "Don't you dare touch writing." And it's really had to, and what's, the commendable piece of this is that I will say, as a board member, even prior to my being on the board, but I have been one of the forces in Sacramento, keeping a very slow hand on the development of performance items, because of wanting to make sure we got it right. And the ideas that Deb has spelled out for what she'd like to see happen with the new and improved writing are really exciting to me, and I have a great deal of confidence in her ability to carry that out. And it's a very exciting opportunity for innovation that we haven't yet seen in the test. So there is a great deal of excitement in this, once we get past this very hard pill.
Is there any kind of a mechanism for supplemental appropriation to be requested here for this? We haven't talked about that.
For this year, or for...
Well, for the shortfall that you have.
That not to have writing not get cut?
Yeah.
There's deficiency bills, but the legislature is in recess right now, and...
And what are the chances of getting...
And I would say, I'm sorry, I would suggest to you that just the superintendent in 1448, that he successfully negotiated with great, with Senator Alford, but it was not an easy task. And I would think that if you went for a deficiency bill with respect to a testing augmentation, that you may well open up many issues that are right now closed for some period of time, and you might not want to do that.
Just one other professional development, I forgot to talk about this, and I think this is really exciting. What we do is we would videotape our session, where we pull anchor papers and so forth, and really talk about, you know, this is, what a four is, and why this is, why this paper is what it is. And so, we tape that, we train that, we bring some fourth and seventh grade teachers in, have them discussing the rubric, and then we provide that videotape. So that's, you know, that's an item that's never been available to districts before. And so, that's an exciting thing to do.
I will actually make a prediction, that I think once the field receives, has the opportunity to do their own scoring and their own discussion about this, we may not get that back at the state level. I mean, that may be something that we decide is such a powerful tool, instructionally, that it outweighs keeping it in the API. So that's a prediction, Reed.
When teachers want to have that discussion, they can do it as part of their ongoing diagnostic testing. They don't need the state's formalism to come in with the state's reliability metrics and, you know, so I think analyzing writing is hugely important, but again, it shouldn't be done once a year. You know, it's a continuous thing.
Well, and one other point, and I don't think this has been mentioned, which is, currently, the tests are scored by teachers all over the nation, maybe particularly from Virginia, other areas. And it could possibly be that you utilize California teachers in the scoring, not at a local level, where they're scoring it locally, but internal to the state. And so, there are tweeners that you could look at long-term to do what both you and Suzanne are talking about.
What would be the reality of teachers actually getting this professional development? How many, I mean, would we be hitting 20% of the districts in California, 80%? What would be the reality of getting that?
You know, you know, I'll tell you, I haven't, this has been kind of, you know, we haven't advertised this, obviously, because we haven't come to you yet. So we haven't had an opportunity to talk to a lot of people. I've shared this with some districts that, just in the very kind of, kind of way, and the response, actually, both Gino and I have had an opportunity to do this, has been wonderful. People are jumping onto the opportunity, or they, or perceived opportunity. I think that will be the hardest thing that we do. But I will tell you that, you know, what we want to do is train those trainers. Now, we're not going to be able to train every fourth grade teacher in the state, nor every seventh grade teacher, but if we can get a pretty good core group of folks in each of the regions, and with some follow-up materials, then I'm hopeful that it will impact quite a number of districts. But what I'd like to do is, between now and the time of our special meeting, maybe to have some more accurate figures for you on that.
Any other board comment on this? Okay. Reed and Suzanne, thank you for your work on this. And Suzanne, thank you for finding the silver lining, and all of this, very nice. And so, Ray will coordinate the teleconference, and we'll be getting some information mailed to us, and we'll go on from there.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, Deb.
Just one other item on the STAR update. We have put in a budget change proposal. Ray mentioned an earlier one, but we are requesting some funds to conduct a STAR independent evaluation. Those of you on the board who've been here a while know that the California High School exit exam has such an evaluation. We think it's a very good opportunity right now. Our testing program is still new, but it's kind of settling down a bit, and so what we'd like to do is put that out for proposal, to have an independent evaluation of the program. Also, best practices, look at some instructional strategies and curriculum efforts around schools and so forth. So just wanted to alert you to that.
My suggestion, and Deb and I had talked about this together, and I have always thought that the STAR program, being the cornerstone, needed to have, and I'll just say Humro like, because you're familiar with the Humro reports that we've been getting, that's on the high school exit exam. And you've never had that on the cornerstone test for your entire system. And I have found, in the work that we've done on high school exit, that those independent evaluations that Humro has submitted have been very, very important and given wonderful feedback. And I think it would be very valuable to the state, and to this board in particular, to have that type of data and information from an independent evaluator on the STAR program. So I would recommend to you that you support the department in the submission of this budget change proposal, and that you actually take a vote to do that, or you could do it by consensus, so that we could join on that as it goes over to the Department of Finance to show that the board, as well as the department, are asking for this change.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable? I think that's a very good point, and certainly, the Humro's been valuable. A report like that, I think, would be very valuable to us. Okay? By consensus, we agree on that one. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Item, item five. Are we going forward?
Yes, we are. Thank you so much.
There you go. Faster than a speeding bullet.
Okay. Okay, item five. This is the STAR program test results, and I think Superintendent O'Connell gave a very good overview of those results in his remarks this morning. These were released on August 16th. Just, I'd like to point out to you that, for the first time, both the STAR and KC results were released simultaneously. We did that for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that AYP and API were, or AYP was released on August 31st, which contains KC data. It didn't seem reasonable for us to wait until our usual time to release, given that the AYP was going to come out. So this will probably be a continuing timeline that we will release STAR and KC together. I don't want to belabor this, I think that you probably, I'm hoping you've had an opportunity to review the results. I would entertain any questions, or if there's a particular point you'd like me to speak to, I'd be happy to. Any questions? No?
Talk about the reporting stuff, so you go on and I'll...
Well, I really, you know, as I said, Superintendent gave the report, and so, you know, the results were mixed this year. You know, there were some disappointments in some grades. I would encourage you, as you look particularly at the math and the science results included in your packet of materials, are tables of course-taking patterns? It's very important, as you look at those math and science results, that you look at those course-taking patterns, because what you will see is increases in the numbers of students taking algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. Those are important things to note when we look at our test results. Same thing has happened with biology, chemistry, and physics. I'd also like you to take a look at what's happening to the integrated math and science. We have, and I believe those are, tables eight and five. What you'll note, while we've had a pretty significant increase in those courses I just mentioned, what we see happening at integrated is some declines, rather significant declines in the students who are participating in those. And in fact, for integrated four, we have 1,600 students taking those tests. So that's something that I think we need to be mindful of and watch fairly closely over the next couple of years. Suzanne, did you have a question, or? Oh, okay. Okay, any other questions about results? Next, item six.
Suzanne? I do want to bring the board's attention very quickly to an issue that related to the release of results, in part, because it, we're trying as much as we can to get every ounce of Ray's good thinking on the record before we lose her. Some of you may be aware, we have multiple conversations going on. I know, the world is a buzz. No, it's okay, everyone was doing it. We had Ray. I know. I obviously talk too much. Some of you may have seen in the San Diego trib and in the valid edition of the LA Times, stories ran that expressed the frustration of local school districts that they received their reports from the state, the parent reports, two weeks late. And they cited that the change of the format to those new reports was the reason for the delay. And our vendor, very much to their credit, very quickly corrected the record on that, which we appreciate. But what I wanted to raise, and Ray's now gone, so we can't get her good, oh, here, she's here. I want to, Ray and I have been talking about this, you know, anytime there's a little fumble in a system, you have some opportunity to kind of learn how you're thinking out loud about what your priorities are. And one of the things that was very clear to me in that little swirl was, although we talk a lot about the importance of maybe someday taking on the goal of increasing the, you know, the rate of getting those results out to schools, we really have not made that a goal, because schools were saying in the press, you know, we're two weeks late, and our response was, "Well, it's only two weeks." So I did a little bit of digging. In Texas, now, Texas does not have an essay test, they only have multiple choice. Their results, last kid tested to reports into the school is a 10-day turnaround. In Florida, it's a six-week turnaround, and they do have essays. And Florida just released another RFP, and priority one, two, and three was, "How can they make that faster than six weeks?" And ask me for ideas in the submission. California has just not been aggressive about that. Ray had some thoughts that I, if you, I'm going to just let Ray talk about what's possible in the next submission.
A couple of things this past year held that up a little bit. And I think there's some easy fixes to it. And I was looking at that, and we, my goodness, we've heard that comment for a while now, and I had talked to Deb about putting that in your next submission, that this turnaround time needed to be resolved. Schools want to have access to the data, and we want them to have access to the data, and we're actually encouraging them through the state process to use that data collaboratively. One of the items that was added to the parent report was looking at how your student did to the average student. And what that required the test companies to do was to wait until they had all the test data to find out what that average student was. And that delayed, allowing districts to get them quicker. That's just one of the issues. But one fix to that would be to say, based on the prior year. Instead of having to wait until you find out what the average student this year is, you just base it on last year. And then, moving along with the test publishers to demand the return of those tests quicker. And in the beginning, when we first had started this program, we had allowed it to be done in waves, and I think they still do some of it in waves. And so, there are a lot of techniques out there to get them back. And New York gets theirs back faster, too. Some of their test results get back in 48 hours. And we also did start this year, I believe, an electronic file transfer to districts, and there may be some more activity that we can do that way. It only shaved off a week, I think, so it wasn't as effective as I'd like.
Well, and the other mechanism that I think is very important is that when you do a request for submission and build in benchmark timelines, build in penalties for, you know, if we don't get it by X date, and then the prime contractor, one of the things that happens is the prime and the subcontractors miss a few deadlines, and it's like, it just is a snowballing effect of how late things get.
Absolutely.
Build in a financial penalty, and then that prime contractor can sort of benchmark out to their subs, similar penalties if things are late, so everybody's accountable, and to structure the contract that way.
And I know Suzanne will remember, and...
Florida does that.
And we've had to impose a penalty before, this was quite a few years back, on late delivery of test materials. So I think that there's plenty of precedence, and certainly in business, that is not uncommon at all. So I think it's an appropriate technique to use, and one that could easily be integrated into the next submission.
So again, for my to-do list, before I leave this board, I'm trying to plant a seed of urgency in the observation that while we've all talked about it, we have not owned this as a major driving goal for the testing system and pushed to find solutions to make this possible. And if you ask school districts what their number two, one, two, and three desired improvement would be, it's turnaround time, and we need to step up.
Okay. Any other board comment?
Well, I just want to thank Suzanne for bringing that issue up, because it is a big issue for teachers. And, you know, they don't get the data till the next school year, it feels like, and so how do you use that data in order to get prepared for the next year? And there's just a lot of concern about the timeliness of the data being returned to them, so that they can use it in preparing for the next, you know, for, to, work with their students to prepare for the next year, so, I mean, that's great.
Okay. All right. Moving on, then.
Okay. Item six. We are asking the board to consider comments received during our public comment period and at the public hearing, and take action regarding the STAR Title V regulations. We brought these to you in July. We've had our 45-day comment period. We've received three comments. They are described and summarized in your blue item that you received, I believe, today. There is, we will be going out, or we will be asking for the board to approve us to go out for a 15-day comment period. There is one regulation that we want to add regarding significant medical emergency. The federal No Child Left Behind legislation has provided this as a flexibility in terms of students participating in the program, and so we have added it both to the STAR and KC regs, but it will require a 15-day comment period.
Okay. And Deborah, have there been any public speakers on any of the STAR items? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, and I don't want to preclude public comment.
There is, there is one on this one.
On this one, okay. So we'll catch up before the motion, then. Okay, any board comment on this? Okay. Public speaker? Oh, okay. So, okay, no board comment? All right, well, we need a motion, move to approve the, excuse me, adopt the amendments to Title V regulations? Okay. Joe? Okay. Glee make the motion? And then, second on Joe? Okay, all those in favor?
One moment. One thing I would like to add to this, and the motion, and I know these are very technical motions, and you're in, you'd like to move this quickly, but what I'd like to add is that in the event that there are no objections received during the 15-day public comment period, that the staff would have the authorization to move these regs on to the Office of Administrative Law. So if you could have the maker of the motion and the second approve that modification, then that would be fine.
Let me go, yeah, okay. All right. All those in favor? Any pose? No, the motion passes unanimously.
Item seven. We are asking the board to approve the 2004-5 contract for the Spanish Assessment of Basic Education, second edition. If you'll recall, at your May meeting, you approved this test to be used during the 2005 testing session. This is an annual contract. This contract is very similar to the last contract you approved. There is a 4% cost of living increase. It's well within our budgeted amount, I'm happy to say. And so, we're asking for you to approve this contract.
Okay. The motion be to approve the 2004-2005 contract with CTB McGraw-Hill for the Spanish Assessment of Basic Education with technical modifications that may be identified and incorporated by staff, subject to the approval of the Executive Director of the State Board. Do you have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay. Second by Jonathan. All those in favor? Any, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a comment. That's the only thing before we vote.
Absolutely.
Which is, under the excessive material charges, I didn't understand why you would ever get to the point where it's on page three of the attachment.
Okay.
If districts do not use 90% of the materials ordered, CTB is authorized to charge districts for the difference between the test administered and the test ordered. I didn't understand why a district would order and then not use almost all of what they ordered.
Well, it can happen, although it's very rare with SABETU. It happens perhaps more with SALT. But if you order, and then you have a shift in your population, or...
80%?
Well, that's what I mean, it's very unusual. I think during the course of this year, I've heard of one... I think during the course of this year, I've heard of one district where it happened, and it was a fairly modest charge. But in my six years of, in assessment of district, that never happened. So it's very unusual. I don't think, as I said, I saw it happen once this year.
So, but we need to have that in there.
Well, because, right, in case that the contractor establishes a certain amount, you know, they base what they print on what the districts tell them. And so it requires additional printing and so forth, so it's a cost to them. When late orders come in, or if it doesn't come back to score, you know, their contract includes scoring as well. So if that doesn't happen, then there's a, there's a, they don't, they don't realize that benefit, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and remember, it could be that they didn't use 90%, they used 89, they used 87%. So it can happen, and it did happen a lot with STAR. So it's not as a, you see how that works?
Yeah.
They just got up to 85%. So there's that overage of 5% there, between 85 and 90, and that's whatever.
Remember my basic math.
I'm sorry. What I meant is, they're just going to charge them for that amount. That's what I meant.
Or if you thought, if you were going to do the optional testing at the beginning of the year, that's what you decided you were going to do, you ordered them, and then all of a sudden something happened, and you decided you weren't going to test. So that's another reason.
Thank you.
Okay. We go to the vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item eight. This is the California High School exit exam update. And just wanted to report to you that we did go out for a bid for our independent evaluator contract on this, our new one. And we reviewed the bids and so forth, and our intent to award was made to the human research, human resources research organization, also known as HUMRO. So they are the contractor for the new independent evaluation of Casey. Also, wanted to mention that last year, as you know, we only tested 10th graders, but this year we will be in our full Casey assessment period, which will mean that we'll be testing those 11th graders that did not pass one or both parts of Casey. And the first assessment date for Casey this year is September 21st and 22nd, followed by November 16th and 17th. So those come fairly early in the school year. The testing population in September is quite small, as you might guess. Folks aren't quite ready to gear up for that. But there are a number of districts that choose that date.
Okay, and this is an information-only item, and we will be getting the HUMRO report, I believe, and then have a --
In November.
Right, in November. And we will have a, in the board meeting in November, we'll have a presentation on that.
Absolutely, by Dr. Weiss.
Right, we look forward to that.
Item nine, is the Casey release of the 2004 results. And as I indicated, these were released with STAR. The good news is that we had 75% of our students passing the English Language Arts Casey, and 74% of our students passing the math. This is great news for districts because they can really identify those students who are in need of those remedial services to be able to pass Casey, and focus on the 25% of their students that aren't there yet. And so they can really target their resources. So we were delighted with these results. These were just 10th grade students this year. Yes, correct. Any questions?
Any comment?
No, if you'll recall, the board in July of 2003, based on the recommendations of the HUMRO report at that time, looked at, delayed the consequences for the Casey. We don't. The testing obligation for those students ended, and so. Well, last year was the first year that the new law was in place. So that was the class of 2006, so they will have their opportunity this year as 11th graders. There was no additional testing of those students that had been tested under the old law.
Now, one thing that we did do, John, just as a point of information, so the class of 2005 took the test as 10th graders. So this year, they did not continue to, they didn't take it as 11th graders, and they won't be taking it as seniors. We didn't, I, you know, there's an element of truth that it would have been good to have longitudinal data on how they did. The law unfortunately didn't give us that option. But one thing we did do is we did provide a secure form of the test out to the field so that the field had the opportunity to continue to administer that test, but it was at a local decision. We didn't have the authority at the state level to force them to do it.
Without the high stakes on it, because we postponed it, a lot of kids wouldn't take it that seriously anyway. So the data you'd get out of it would be hard to interpret, so that's part of it.
They're required. That's right.
Hey, there was a report to this board that I think predates me, but might answer Mr. Fisher's question. Didn't Sue Phillips give some projections? We, the board had a presentation by expert legal and other segmenticians who follow these trends nationally.
Right, we did. We had Susan Phillips, who was instrumental in the Texas test and was very familiar with Florida, and she's worked with many states. And what they find nationwide is if you have an initial test-taking passage rate between 60 and 65%, that you usually will end up getting up to around 95% passage at the end, based on the number of times that you give the test, and we're clearly within that range. So that's what we would anticipate achieving.
They have five additional after the original, so six total.
Any other comment, questions? Oh, Ricky, I'm sorry.
Just to get my fellow board members' opinion, what would we consider a satisfactory passing rate? I know in Massachusetts, they have a 95% passing rate, and apparently people are very content with that number out there. And you mentioned that same figure here. So what would we find, what would we be content with?
Well, I'm telling you that that's what the data shows you'll get to, is around 95%. I wouldn't want you to think that that's what we think is the number we're shooting for. I think that most of the board would want 100% because the idea is that we want the kids to learn the information. So I think you have to look at the reality of why some children may not pass it, and it may have very little to do with academics and a whole lot to do with social influences at that age group. I mean, there's academics there as well, and you also have severely cognitively disabled children. So it's unlikely that you'd get to 100%. But I think the goal is to get as close to that as you can.
Anyone else? Okay. On to the next item, Deb.
Okay, item 10. We're asking you to approve the school district apportionment for the California High School exit exam for the '04-'05 school year. This is an item we bring to you each year. We're asking for $3 for each student tested on English Language Arts and/or Math. And then for grade 10 students only, we have to have an answer document for every student at the time of the census administration, which is when we test all of our 10th grade students. Districts have the option to have their census administration be in either February or March. This 10th grade population is used in the calculation of adequate yearly progress. And so it's, it's very important in terms of participation rates that every student submits an answer document, whether or not they take the test. So for 10th grade only, we offer an apportionment for those documents that are just have demographic information only of 32 cents. We came to you last year with this, and we needed to clarify who exactly was getting this 32 cents. This is strictly for the 10th grade, 10th graders. This is not meant to be for every 11th grader who takes the test, since we don't really want an answer document for every 11th grader, because we only care about those students who have not yet passed. So we're asking for you to approve this, and it is clarifying what you, the rate that you approved last year as well.
I have another question. I was trying to do the math, basic math again. And last year, what was set aside was 1.6 million, and it was based on over a half a million 10th graders in three different tests. And then now we're retesting 25% of those students because they didn't pass. And then presumably, we're testing another half million of the 10th graders. So I'm just wondering why it almost doubled. Am I not figuring that out right?
There's no retest this time, right? Because we're starting afresh with just 10th graders?
Why, I'm sorry, why what doubled?
Three, yeah, why is it 3 million for '04-'05?
Okay.
I was trying to figure out the numbers. That's what I was trying to figure out.
Because last year, there was no retest, so we were simply testing the 500,000 10th graders. This year, we have all the retest, and so we have to accommodate those as well. And it's $3 for those students.
But it's only 25% of last year's class that you're retesting.
Right, but they can take it twice.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That was the answer.
Okay. The motion would be to approve, as recommended by staff, Cassidy, a 2004-05 apportionment, $3 for each student administered the English Language Arts and/or Mathematics part of the exit exam, and 32 cents per grade, 10 students only, who are not tested and for whom answer document is submitted with the completed demographic information during the census administration. Okay, so that is the motion. Do I have a maker? Okay, Glee. And second by Janine. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right.
Okay, item 11. I'm going to go forward?
I think so, if we can get, Deborah, leave this to you. These are fairly quick, are they not?
They're quick, yeah.
Okay.
I can do this. Item 11. We are asking that you adopt the amendments to Title V regulations for the California High School exit exam. We have just finished our 45-day comment period. During that comment period, we received two comments yesterday, and both positive, like what we're doing, which is a good thing. Like STAR, we are asking that we put these out for an additional 15-day comment period to have the, to include the regulation regarding significant medical emergency.
I have one more question.
Please.
I'm sorry.
Please, no, no.
What happens if they sign this and say, and we've trained all these people to administer tests, and they?
Can you give me a page reference?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it's page 13 of attachment one. And essentially, it's the security affidavit.
Uh-huh.
And I, I'm just curious, what happens if someone doesn't follow these things? What happens to that test administrator?
Well, I mean, we don't take, we don't do any disciplinary action. We're not in that business. But obviously, making sure that our tests are secure is of the utmost importance to us. So, you know, we, they sign this in an effort to make sure that these are followed. If there is some reported irregularity, which happens, then Casey is a little bit different than STAR. Casey actually has a security, a firm, you can call it that, I suppose, but they go out and they actually investigate the incident. And so, and then based on their investigation, we determine if there's been some compromise to the student's test, or possibly, that's what these regs attempt to do, to if there's an irregularity, that it could filter into the AYP system, which didn't exist before because Casey wasn't part of AYP. So that's what happened. And similar situation in STAR as well. Districts, we leave it up to districts to handle any disciplinary action that may come about from this.
Any further questions? Okay, the motion would be to direct staff to send out the reviewed proposed regulations for the exit exam for a 15-day public comment period. If no objections to the revisions to the regulations are received during the 15-day public comment period, direct staff to complete the rulemaking package, submit it to the Office of Administrative Law for approval. And if objections to the revisions to the regulations are received during the 15-day public comment period, direct staff to place the regulations on the board's November agenda. Is there a maker for this motion? Jonathan, seconded by Don Fisher. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next.
All right. Item 12 is the California English Language Development Test update. Just wanted to bring you up to date on a piece of legislation. AB 921 was working its way through the legislation originally. It was a bill that we sponsored because it was a bill to authorize the spending of about $1.4 million to create a kindergarten and first-grade reading and writing portion of the English Language Development Test. The bill morphed somewhat and ended up being basically asking the board to, for, to request a waiver for K-1 reading and writing. The bill did not make it out of, it didn't, it actually died, I guess. I hate to use that term, but became inactive. That's probably better. And so I think that you're going to possibly talk about this in your No Child Left Behind item, but wanted to just give you context for where we are with K-1 reading and writing.
Now, it's time for lunch. That concludes, and Deb, thank you for all of that hard work. It's a long one. And let's come back at 1:30. Okay, thank you. Item 13. Mr. Padilla, so nice to see you.
Good afternoon. Bill Padilla. I'm here to talk about our brand-new report, the Accountability Progress Report. If we didn't have enough three-letter acronyms of API and AYP, we've created yet another one, the APR. So this is a blue item, and I'd like to draw your attention to attachment two on the blue item. Item 13, attachment two, page one of two. So if you're finding it, this is what I'm hoping you'll get to. Item 13, attachment two, page one of two. It has a bar graph in it. This is our newly designed report. If you went up on our website, you'd see this in color. And I want to kind of go over this report. If you look at the API scores in the sort of center-left portion of this report, for the school, you have the 2003, and then next to it, the 2004 API. So for the example we gave you, it goes down 21 points, and that, and that's displayed graphically in the other graph to the right of that. So then we do it for the district, and then the comparison for the state. So this is the first part of the AYP report, and it shows, if you look at the right for the state value, it went up 10 points. Even though this is a fake report, these are real numbers for the state. So here's an interesting, here's an interesting finding. If you read the LA Times, they, they took a look at the results from the assessment and looked at proficient or above, and they said, overall, half the schools have gone down or more. Yet we come out with the API, and we show statewide a 10-point gain, a seeming contradiction. And the reason behind that is that if you look at just the percent proficient or above on a test, you're throwing away a lot of other information about how other kids in the different parts of that distribution are doing. Because you're only counting people as they cut, or as they cross that one cut point, up to proficient. So the APIs, you know, has far below basic, below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced. So it's a more sensitive measure across the distribution of kids at that school. And we do know, if you examine the assessment results, that there was a lot of movement in the lower end of that distribution. But the API by design is weighted for more weight per student when they cross from far below basic to below basic. So what you really see here is that the API is a more sensitive measure, plus it combines all the tests across all grade levels at a school, and that's why you're seeing a rise of 10 points. So anyway, so this is the school report, page one. This was, those of you who were around for the big debate about how we would do this, this is what we used to call front page, back page. This is all in nice, bright, vivid color, and if you'll turn the page to attachment two, page two, page two of two, you see the federal portion of this on the back page.